Yep. I get the gavel one time a year. I call the order, a meeting, an organizational meeting of the council of the city of New Franklin, and it's not on your agenda, but please rise and join me in the pledge.
I like the gavel.
Oh, I like that too. I don't know which one council.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow. I guess that counts for prayer too. Nation under God.
Well, you don't put the comment.
Okay. Yes, at this point, prior to a roll call, we will proceed with the swearing in of our newly elected, or re-elected as the case may be, council members. And we've asked Judge Todd McKinnon from Bardington Municipal Court to do the honors, please. We thought we would do one by one, and Judge, I'll leave it to you to call him forward and proceed.
All right, it's good to be back home again, and you join, all of the city council people join an illustrious alumni group, including Mayor Adamson and myself, who both served as New Franklin City Council people, and I served with President Jones, and it is just such a privilege to swear in the ward members. I'll begin with Jim Cotts, Ward number one. Mr. Cotts. Raise your hand. Hi, I'm Steve D.
Hi, just take your name. Hi, Jim Cotts.
Do solemnly and sincerely promise.
Do solemnly and sincerely promise.
And swear or affirm.
And swear or affirm.
That I will conform to.
That I will conform to.
And uphold.
And uphold.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of both the United States of America.
Of both the United States of America.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And will support the charter.
And will support the charter.
And all ordinances.
And all ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
I will be loyal.
I will be loyal.
And with strict adherence.
And with strict adherence.
Obey the duties.
Obey the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
Set forth by law.
Set forth by law.
And the will.
And the will.
Of the citizens.
Of the citizens.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
Of the ci- of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Cotts is first because he went around here for a little while, and he's Ward one, so we're going sequentially through the boards. For those of you who might be still visiting. Let's get started.
Hi, Barry Schaefer. Do solemnly and sincerely promise.
Do solemnly and sincerely promise.
And swear or affirm.
And swear or affirm.
That I will conform to.
That I will conform to.
And uphold.
And uphold.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of both the United States of America.
Of both the United States of America.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And I will support.
And I will support.
The charter.
The charter.
And all ordinances.
And all ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
I will be loyal.
I will be loyal.
And with strict adherence.
And with strict adherence.
Obey the duties.
Obey the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
Set forth by law.
Set forth by law.
And the will.
And the will.
Of the citizens.
Of the citizens.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
Congratulations.
So let's see, how do I do this? Do you have somebody here tonight?
I have my mom.
Mom, come on up. Hold it, put that pin on the Bible, raise your hand up, about that. Remember here? All right.
Hi, Devin Almond.
Do solemnly and sincerely promise.
Do solemnly and sincerely promise.
And swear or affirm.
Or swear or affirm.
That I will conform to.
That I will conform to.
And uphold.
And uphold.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of both the United States of America.
Of both the United States of America.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And I will support.
And I will support.
The charter.
The charter.
And all ordinances.
And all ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
I will be loyal.
I will be loyal.
And with strict adherence.
And with strict adherence.
Obey the duties.
Obey the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
Set forth by law.
Set forth by law.
And the will of the citizens.
And the will of the citizens.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
Congratulations.
I, Gray Wolf, do solemnly and sincerely promise. Do solemnly and sincerely promise. And swear or affirm.
Or swear or affirm.
That I will conform to.
That I will conform to.
And uphold.
And uphold.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of both the United States of America.
Of both the United States of America.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And will support the charter.
And will support the charter.
And all ordinances.
And all ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
And the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
I will be loyal.
I will be loyal.
And with strict adherence.
And with strict adherence.
Obey the duties.
Obey the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
Set forth by law.
Set forth by law.
And the will of.
And the will of.
The citizens.
The citizens.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
The city of New Franklin, Ohio.
Congratulations.
All right, we'll give the regular chance to get a seat. We'll take a roll call here in just a moment. We have some snacks and some water in the back, so feel free, if you want to sneak back and grab some now, we'll enjoy those together at the close of business, so. Judge McKinnon, thank you so much for joining us and for giving us the honor of your presence and getting us started here in the right path.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I should mention, our council person from District Seven at a bright this time said, Bethany McKinnon, she's joining us here. And I suppose we should introduce your bailiff.
My bailiff Nancy Collins is here.
I won't say she's the brains of the outfit over there, but she's very important in the names of the puzzle. If you've been around the justice system, you know how important a bailiff is. Nancy does a fabulous job up here. Okay, with that, I would ask Kelly if you would do a roll call, please.
Mr. Cotts?
Present.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. what?
Present.
Mr. Almond?
Present.
All right, at this point, we will proceed with the election of the council president. This is done consistent with Robert's Rules of Order. In a moment, I'll open the floor for nominations. Seconds are not necessary. We will see if there's nominations. When I hear no more, I'll ask three times if there's any other nominations, and at that point, we do not need a motion to close. The nominations instead, we will proceed to a roll call vote. Each member will announce their choice of those who are nominated, and there are four votes required for the election. If there were more than two people nominated, the vote will drop off, we proceed to a second vote. We've never had to go quite that far, but that's the same protocol that then you'll follow for the vice president as soon as I get this gavel out of my hands. So with that, I'll open the floor for nominations for council president.
I'd like to nominate Jeff Daniels for president of New Franklin City Council.
All right. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
No.
Are there any other nominations? Roll call, Ms. Kelly.
Mr. Cotts?
Daniels.
Oh. Mrs. Jones?
Daniels.
Mr. Daniels?
Daniels.
Mr. Powell?
Daniels.
Mr. what?
Stane D.
Mr. Almond?
Daniels.
There is a protocol relative to abstention on issues, on specific issues, resolutions and ordinances. I don't have any reason to believe that it will apply in this circumstance. If you care to elaborate, you can, certainly not required.
Yeah, fine.
Okay, all right. And with that then, are you going to let have your gavel or am I going to give it to my gavel?
I'll let the board win. It's nice to know how well I can.
Thank you. All right, well, with that, thank you very much, and now we'll proceed to the election of the council vice president. I will open the floor for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Kevin Powell for vice president.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Kelly, if you call a roll.
Mr. Cotts?
Powell.
Mr. Schaefer?
Powell.
Mrs. Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Daniels?
Powell.
Mr. Powell?
Powell.
Mr. what?
Powell.
Mr. Almond?
Almond.
So, Mr. Powell's elected, congratulations. And, uh, there it is. Next on the agenda, unless somebody can think of something else that I might be missing, we're going to go on to council committee assignments. I have made these assignments, I've talked to most everybody. These are not firm and fixed for the year, as I understand it, and if someone would like to change for some reason, feel free to let me know, and we don't need a roll call or anything like that for this, these are just my decision. First, the safety committee. I have the chairperson being Judy Jones, members Barry Schaefer and Gray Wolf. Streets and Drange Committee, I have chairperson Devin Almond, Kevin Powell as a member, and Judy Jones as a member. Public Utilities, I have Kevin Powell as the chairman, Judy Jones and Devin Almond as members. Laws and ordinances, Greg Wolf as chair, Jim Cotts as member and Devin Almond as member. Finance Committee, I have Jim Cotts as chair, Kevin Almond and Barry Schaefer as members. Community Development, I have Barry Schaefer as chair, Greg Wolf and Jim Cotts as members. The last item on the agenda for the special meeting, we're still in the special meeting, is the adoption of meeting dates for 2024, and do we have any objection to us continuing with the first and third Wednesday of every month? And do we have any objection to, should we talk about the summer meetings now? Yeah, thanks. We had, and how did that work? We skipped the first meeting? Right, for the last several years, we've skipped the first meeting in June and the first meeting in July. Anybody have any objections or conversation to have about that? So we follow all that, Kelly?
Yes.
All right, good deal. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the special organizational meeting of the New Franklin City Council. If there's a first and a second, Kelly, if you call a roll.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. what?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
We are adjourned. So the next part of the meeting is before the regular council meeting starts, there's a lot of people here that haven't been to meetings before, we do our committee meetings. This is a little bit of a less formal part of the meeting, so if anybody would like to make a comment, feel free to raise your hand. The chair of that committee could call on you or could not call on you, depending on what committee chair chooses. After those committee meetings are over, that's when we'll start the actual real public meeting, and that's where they'll be official public input and all that kind of stuff, we will follow the agenda. So with that, tonight, we have, how many first readings? Three first readings, no second readings, and one third reading. The first ordinance is Finance Committee 24R01, Mr. Cotts.
Thank you. We'll open Finance Committee at 6:15, Resolution 24R01, a resolution authorizing additional appropriations to the 2023 annual operating appropriation budget and declaring an emergency. This is for the amount of $5,594.37 to the income tax fund due to additional collection fees. This is the second time that we've had to do that for 2023, is that right?
Um, yes, we added additional from our, from our 2023 original budget, we added 30,000, but it actually came up to an extra 5,000 that, on the last distribution that we got in December.
Questions, comments? Okay, wait three. We will close Finance Committee meeting at 6:15.
All right, next, we have Resolution 24R02, which is Community Development. Sorry.
We're going to open up the Community Development at 6:17. Resolution number R, or, excuse me, Resolution 24R02, a resolution authorizing and directing the major grant application to the Act of Metropolitan Area Transition Study ASMATs, connecting communities together, 2024 Planning Grant Program. Now, I believe this is the corridor from 1-619 from about the golf course, clubhouse down to State Row, or is it all the way down to Manchester?
Well, that part, it will certainly primarily be focused on that area, up to state, because it appears that's how far the sewer can go, on a gravity basis, but it may extend up to, it could extend up to, up to 93. This is, they actually just, well, we had preliminary discussions relative to this, we knew it was coming. They did the formal rollout on this today, AMATs did, and it is a, there's, there's only $80,000, they're anticipating doing two $40,000 grants. We've got a project that's certainly worthy of consideration. The application has, is required to be in on February the 9th, and it does require a resolution from council, a supportive resolution from council. That's why you have that today, because we'd like to get this app in sooner than the 9th. We are, there's no match required. Whoever they award these grants to, they actually, AMATs actually picks the contractor to do the design work. If, for whatever reason, and they send that out for bid, let's say that the bids all came in over $40,000, we're not required to accept it. We're not required to accept the grant. If it came in over some amount, and it was nominal, for lack of a better term, and council wanted to, you could. So you're not bound by anything by making the application, we're just supporting the idea. And I know it's something that we've all talked about, that we've been talking about because we know that there's, it's publicly been announced, there's potential development there, and so I think it's the timing of this, the availability of this is good. We discussed it now for several months that this was coming, so here it is.
So the quick question, with the other $40,000, do you assume, is that $80,000 specific to 619, so would the other $40,000 be for Green, or is that?
No, no. I'm sorry. The $80,000 is for, is for AMATs entirely, any of them.
Entire AMATs, okay.
Which I think they have several counties, so the competition will be significant, but we feel like we just happen, we sort of have a really viable project to propose to them.
So one of the things I had mentioned when we talked about this before is, from the, let's just say we get the grant, between the process of getting the grant and having somebody start the work, I'd mention I'd like to have a group of citizens, because this is really to shape the concept, what this area is going to look like, and before we'd have a contractor develop something, bring an act to us and say, you know, here's what they, whether we like it or not, I think it would be, you know, beneficial to have a group of citizens, council involved and stuff, to kind of have that concept, maybe meet with that contractor before they put pen to paper and talk about those concepts and stuff, that way then they are done with the work, it's something that everybody has already had in mind, is what they'd like to look at.
No doubt, I mean, no question, those are all good points. We had a preliminary meeting with the, with two of the representatives from AMATs, we talked about that specific thing, and so in the event we're awarded the grant, what next would form would be a project team that would be, would involve council, administration, stakeholders in that corridor, to get as much input as we can, even to have input relative to selection of the contractor. Ultimately, it's a, you know, the best, you know, they're restrained in terms of who they select, we can't pick them, but they certainly will, will be interested in suggestions or input from this project team that we'll put together.
Yeah, I'd say I'd also like to see a member of the Community Development Committee involved.
Sure.
You know, I think that's an ideal, if an ideal, the reason these people work at these things was for their involvement, I think that's a great example of someone who's going to be involved.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Just so I'm clear, so this is the grant that we're going to try to hit that downtown feel from basically the golf course to Dusty Road or State Road, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't know if you finished, but, yeah, the idea and the reason that we think it's important to think about some design at this point, whether or not the golf course development will happen or not, we'll see. We're aware, it's, you know, it's been, it's been discussed, we have, publicly, it's been, people have been advised of what, what they may have in mind. That would include bringing sewer and water to that intersection. We've had a number of businesses and property owners on that next stretch of 619 who have indicated they'd like to have some sewer and water. We already have, 619 is the most traveled route in New Franklin, according to the traffic studies. There's about 10,000 vehicles a day already that go up and down State Route 619. There's no sidewalks, there's no streetlights, you know, if in fact development occurs there, we're going to be, may want, it certainly would want sidewalks, may want some pedestrian lanes, may want some bike lanes, those types of things. So this is a sort of a preemptive look at, you know, what might we, what might be favorable to New Franklin for development in that area, for infrastructure, you know, among others. There's been some, maybe a turn lane, depending on, maybe they can add a turn lane for a stretch there. So not necessarily, it doesn't involve how it's developed, in other words, and I know you use, Kevin uses the term loosely of downtown, we don't know what will happen, but, you know, you know, historically, we have a suspicion, okay, that if the sewer and water comes, there'll probably be some development. All of that will have to go through planning and zoning, it won't be anything hell or skele, but to kind of get ahead of that. And the second, I'm really glad you asked that question, because the other thing this does, if we're lucky enough to get the grant and we get the study, then that opens the door to federal funds for the infrastructure development, for safe cities, for maybe some sidewalks and some bike lanes, and to bring the federal money in, and the door's open because this is federal land to begin with that we'll begin. And so it's, really gives us, you know, a leg up in terms of, again, if, once the design comes in, the council, the planning and zoning feels like it makes sense, then to get the funding for that, the fact that we got the grant, that the design grant's going to matter.
And this is just like permissions from council to throw our heads around and ask for them, right?
Exactly. Any further questions or comments? Is it okay to wave the tray? Is it down here? Okay, wave the tray. All right, we will close. Community Development at 6:25. All right, thank you. Next, we have Resolution 24R03, which is Streets and Drange, which is, yeah.
Thank you. We'll open up the Streets and Drange Committee at 6:25, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into agreement with GPD Associates for Environmental Services relative to the Grohl Road Bridge Project and declaring an emergency. So after looking at it a little bit, it seems pretty ordinary, this is just, the city of New Franklin is now required to prepare and submit environmental reports for the Grohl Road project. I do not know, there's been past discussions, as I've been here for that long, and I'll let it open up for discussion.
And if I could?
Yeah.
Okay, if, yeah, this is, we received grant funding for this bridge. We don't, what began, the way it started was, ODOT does their bridge inspection, and they took a look at that bridge and said, we're going to need to do something with that bridge. We got preliminary cost estimates in the range of $370,000. $290,000 for construction, $80,000 for design, so $370,000, we made application, and we received a $300,000 grant for the bridge. Council previously approved GPD for the design part of this. We had a, ODOT, a meeting with GPD and ODOT, and because of the location of the bridge, an environmental study is required. It was, that wasn't anticipated initially, but that's the fact, and so now we need to, we had to get a, we're going to have to have the environmental study. GPD, since they're on the project, we asked them to give us a proposal, which they did, to the tune of $18,372. So this is, this is one of the pieces, and these, this takes a little while, and I don't know, Mr. Powell, this is in your bandwidth, but we're advised, even from the ODOT folks, that it takes a while to get these things done, so we'd like to get this piece in place. This has to happen. So far, that bridge is in good shape, it's safe, there are no lane closures or anything like that, but that could happen in the future, so we want to move, advance that project. Once we get the environmental done, the design will be done shortly, we can proceed, hopefully before the year's out.
How far down the, down Grohl is, just, it's got to be pretty close to the edge of the city, isn't it?
So, less than a quarter mile down from Parable.
Okay. Didn't see you back there. I'm ahead. Did you get it right? Okay.
Any other questions? I'd hate to see we have to make sure again, so I think it'd be okay, I feel comfortable with the three for tonight. We will close the Streets and Drange Committee at 6:27.
We have no second readings, the next reading is Ordinance 23003, which is Laws and Ordeons Committee, Council of Hope. We'll like to open the, we want an ordinance committee meeting at 6:29 PM. It orders to amend Articles 4, 5, 6, 7, 11, and 14 of the New Franklin zoning code. We might get some discussion about that, because I know nothing about it.
Well, we're probably going to ask if we, I don't even know if it's legal, because it's in our third reading, but we'll do that. I'd love to have a little more time, but it's, it is legal.
Okay.
It is legal, we can, we have to have a discussion about what the time, the time need is, I think, for the main focus.
And you can have, you can take as much time as you want. There's an required number of three, you can wave the three, but once you pass that, you can take as many as you want. There was one amendment, the last time that you met, there was a discussion, and I think Mr. Daniels brought it up, that, that it was in Article 14, the definitions, and there was a definition of developed lot, and that definition seemed to suggest that you had to have all of these components to constitute a developed lot. I trust that we got the amended language to everybody. I thought that Barry sent it out, and if not, I thought everybody got CC'd on that. I thought that Barry sent it out, and if not, I thought everybody got CC'd on that. But in any event, previously, it led a parcel, it read the parcel prepared for construction of buildings and improved with installed gas lines, water lines, electric lines, telephone, and cable lines, stormwater, and roadways, and the sound of the violas. And so the suggested amendment to that is a developed lot would be an existing parcel of land available for construction of buildings with improvements in place, e.g., installed gas lines, et cetera, et cetera. So it could be any or none of all of those things.
Did it take the word and out?
And, yeah. So that changed, that's the only change from what was previously discussed at the council public hearing. We had the first reading the same day as the public hearing, so the second reading, that issue was raised. This is the third reading, certainly would be no reason to, it's not urgent, but we want to, we want to get it raised, so we move on to the next one.
Yeah, if I could explain the concern with that, it had to do with the thirty-five foot setback on lakefront properties. So there were a number of citizens that were concerned that we could have somebody build new houses, the setback from the lake has been fifty feet traditionally, so the fear is that somebody could come in and build a house that's thirty-five feet from the lake, and then build another house thirty-five feet, and then this person back here now has lost their view. So let me go to the town lakefront property, one of the big reasons that you like to be on the lake is to keep the lake. So that was a large part of the concern, and then reading through the language, it had the word and in, so it listed all of those things that made it look like you had to have a gas line, you know, every single thing that's on there. So it seemed like it could be construed as restrictive, to the point that if somebody had, let's say, three parcels, bought three houses that were side by side, and those three had significant lots, that they could say, oh, I'm going to redevelop this, and I'm going to make this a new development. And it would have been a tough sell, the way it was written. It wasn't written terribly, but it would have been possible, and I appreciate the fact that it was made. I don't know of any other concerns with this ordinance. I really don't. I don't think, and I'd be curious whether anybody else has any, any thoughts on whether this has kind of been through the process and is ready to move forward. But obviously, if any, if any council member has a desire to have another reading, we'll definitely look forward to that.
I was at the council meeting, and of course, you and Jim there. Tim made it, all of the issues that were proposed from the public were addressed and were addressed in a way that was positive to the public. So I'd be okay either way to have any additional time of looking at it.
I think.
Anybody else have anything? I would like to have, to do the next meeting.
So you just say, permission for time is requested, permission for time is granted.
Okay, permission for time is requested, and permission for time is permitted, time is granted.
I like this. Right, you'll say that during a regular.
Yeah, that's very the regular.
Okay, yeah, I would not do that. And I will close the ordinance committee meeting at six thirty-four.
All right, thank you very much. All right, other committees we have are Streets and Drainage, Safety, and Public Utility. Do you have any, by chance, have any topics to discuss in their committees? Hearing done. We're done with committee eight, so we're going to move on with the regular meeting. A call of order, the regular meeting of City of New Franklin for January third, twenty twenty-four. We already sent the pledge, did all those pledges on? Want to do the pledge again?
Sure. I like, I like.
In the United States of America, the two we're public, for which it stands, one nation under God, in this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Kelly, please go.
Mr. Powell.
Present.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mrs. Jones.
Seven.
Mr. Daniels.
Here.
Mr. Powell.
Present.
Mr. Almond.
Present.
Mr. Powell. Present. I'd like to make motion to approve the minutes for the regular scheduled meeting of December twentieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
You have first and second, Kelly.
Mr. Schaefer. Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Okay, now it's time for a formal public comment. If anybody has a public comment, please stand, state your name, and we'd like you to keep your comments down to four minutes, we're usually three left on that. Any public comment? Hearing done, we will move on to the first reading, this is resolution number twenty-four O one, Kelly.
A resolution authorizing additional appropriations to the two thousand twenty-three annual operating appropriation budget and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee. We move to wave the three readings on resolution twenty-four R zero one.
You have first and the second, Kelly.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Almond.
Yes.
Mr. Wop.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-four R zero one.
Second.
We have the first and the second, Kelly.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Almond.
Yes.
Mr. Wop.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Motion to pass. Resolution twenty-four R O two.
A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to make grant application to the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study, AMAS, Connecting Communities Together, two thousand twenty-four Planning Grant Program.
This was brought in front of the community development committee, and we're going to ask to wave the three.
Second.
You have first and the second, Kelly.
Mr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Almond.
Yes.
Mr. Wop.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Motion to pass this. Oh, sorry.
Now, we're going to ask that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
You have first and the second.
Mr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Almond.
Yes.
Mr. Wop.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Motion to pass this. Is that it right there? I thought he's going to correct me for this one. Resolution twenty-four R zero three.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with GPD Associates for Environmental Services relative to the Grill Road Bridge Project and declaring an emergency.
This was brought in front of the Streets and Drainage Committees. We ask to wave the three readings.
Second.
Kelly.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Almond.
Yes.
Mr. Wop.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Almond.
Yes.
Mr. Wop.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Daniels.
Yes. Motion to pass. Ordinance twenty-three O O three.
An ordinance to amend Articles four, five, six, seven, eleven, and fourteen of the New Franklin zoning code.
This was brought in front of the laws and ordinance committee, I'm requesting additional time, time is requested, and additional time is granted.
All right, that leads us to our favorite part.
Thanks, Mr. Daniels, I appreciate that. Okay, a few things, but before we do anything else, we always like to embarrass, I didn't say embarrass, we like to welcome students who come to join us to, to, to see the government in action. So I think it'd be great, we had, I think we have three students from King Central Catholic. Why don't you guys stand up, and the camera's right over there, and tell us who you are? Go ahead.
I'm Alicia Baracki, I'm Bridget Burke of Adenheiser.
Okay, and what brings you here today?
Um, our AP government class.
All right, well, good, well, welcome, we hope you come, does anybody live here, one of you lives here, or any?
I live near here.
Okay, let's close him off.
Thank you, you picked the best city.
Yes, you did. You took a good day, we appreciate it. Hey, and is anybody out there, anybody want to introduce anybody else, guys? We've got guests here, how's your time, because you don't have to.
I'd like to.
Go ahead.
Front row, I have my father-in-law, my daughter Lindsay, my beautiful wife Lori, Jeff, my son-in-law, my very pregnant daughter, trying to be a grandpa for the first time pregnant. I meant to wave it.
Okay, everyone's good? Okay, all right. The first, the charter review commission. We, we, every five years, we're required by our charter to do a charter review. This is the year, and the charter requires that we, that I appoint seven electors from New Franklin to serve on the charter commission with the approval of council. We advertised this for a month in October, and I've been talking about it pretty much every time we have a meeting. The, these electors will, will then, public meetings will be held, everything they do will be a public meeting, and they will make recommendations to council. Council can make recommendations to them for chart, possible charter amendments, the public, anybody can, can make recommendations, and ultimately, this commission in June will, or prior to June, will, will make recommendations as to any amendments to the charter that they think should go on the ballot. Then that goes to council, council has a public hearing on that, and then ultimately, council decides what's going to the ballot. So I would move for approval of the following, David Stock, who's just recently retired, is one of our council people, Mark Webb, who served as filling in Ward Four, Lynn Clark, who is an attorney, and she was our representative on Summit County Public Health for a number of years, and she has served on this charter commission the last time around, Carol Adamson, my favorite, she was elected to the first charter commission, and has served a couple times since then, Scott Fisher, who is a financial analyst, and he served on the last charter commission, Judy Williams, who served on our, our comprehensive plan commission, and also is involved in so much out here, and Rosie Milliken, who's the all-star volunteer and has a lot of business experience as well. Rosie, you're back there, Rosie, there's Rosie. All right, so that's the slate I would, I would appoint, and I would ask for motion to approve that slate.
So, Simon.
All right, any discussion? The only thing that I'd like to add to this, that I'd kind of like for somebody on our laws and ordinances committee to pay attention and possibly be involved, it's an opportunity for a committee on council to be connected to the process, that's all.
Sure.
Any discussion? Kelly, call room.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Almond.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We have one spot left to fill on our boards, and that's the ordinance on planning and zoning. And a young lady was brought to my attention by Barry, and he had, she had, he had talked to her about a year ago, and she has moved here about three or four years ago and had some desire to be involved in, in the government, in the community. Her name is Ayanna Hughey, that's A Y A N N A, Hughey, H U G H E Y. And so I asked her to come talk with me, she submitted an application, lovely lady, married to a gentleman here, lives near the lakes. She is, she's eminently overqualified. She is the vice president of human resources at IMCD Group. They are an international global chemical operation with offices up in Westlake or Beechwood, four billion dollar global operation, and she's the VP, prior to that, she was HR at PepsiCo. She's a graduate of Cornell University. She previously lived in Elmira, New York, where she served on the planning commission at Elmira. And so I would move for approval of her appointment to the one-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
So, second.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, Judy, Judy said so moved, that's the second.
Well, he said, I moved that, you know, so I just went with it.
All right.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Almond.
Yes.
All right, let's see, a couple of things, the boards now are all staffed, they're all working, we're continuing on the planning, on the revisions and review of the zoning ordinance. We have, we had this, the final draft of the code of ordinances, and it was mentioned earlier, I've sent it out to everybody a while back, but we've been busy with some other things, there's a couple of places you're going to have to take a hard look at, not much, but I'll point those out to you, I think, and, and certainly read the whole code, it's a big code. So my intention is, hopefully, the first quarter of this year, we'll get that to a point where we can be adopted and approved. So we're moving forward there. Just as a, to, to, up to speed, although our new council people were active and we were present at most of these meetings, but you know, you're aware of the other things we're working on, the parks commission, things that we'd expect to happen here in two thousand twenty-four, the parks commission is looking to recommend a pavilion over a grill, also some playground equipment over there, some playground equipment at Sisler, and a trail, a walking trail at Sisler, all within budget, so that's what's going on with parks, you'll see that come to you as the year progresses. We're actively working to secure funding for our State Route ninety-three sewer from a variety of sources, the governor's capital budget, the Ohio Department of Development, Ohio bills, and I also have another window into some additional federal money, so we're working on that one. The, we already talked about State Route six nineteen, we expect in this first quarter, we will get some plans submitted to us relative to the Turkeyfoot Golf Course development, so we, it appears that's still moving forward, and that's something that'll work its way through planning and zoning, and eventually the council, whatever those plans are. I wanted to remind, especially the new council, that we are, with the City of Green, members of the South Summit Council of Governments, and the sole function of that group right now is the operation of our South Summit dispatch center, a joint operation with the City of Green. We also, we serve Coventry, we serve Springfield, we serve Lake More, the City of Green as well, it's, it's been, it's really been a good thing for us, and so that's continuing to flourish, would be a good word, and we may have additional members as, as this year unfolds. And, let's see, I'm going to tell you about that, and this, and this, and this, and this, all right, and lastly, you guys always like to hear that word, I know, I, we are members of, well, we were previously umbrellaed with Summit County relative to stormwater at the state and federal EPA level. There is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Regulations, NPVES, there's also Municipal Separate Stormwater System, MS four compliance, I'm guessing Mr. Powell has some insight into these, not to put you on the spot, but what has happened is that the EPA has decided that each city has to have their own, we can't have this, so we had to submit our own plan, which we've done, and that's, late last year, or sometime last year, we, we engaged the OHM to assist us with that, just had a rather lengthy meeting with them, where we checked a whole bunch of boxes, there's a lot of things we're going to have to do from a regulatory standpoint, which we're in the process of doing, but one of the things that we're required to do, and this really is a kind of nice thing, too, it gave me something to write about today, I'm always looking for something to write about, we are required to, one branch of our responsibilities is to continue to raise public awareness. We are required to, one branch of our responsibility is to continue to raise public awareness of issues relative to environmental concerns as it relates to stormwater. And when we talk about that, it's, you know, what's that got to do with us? Our water ends up, and most of the water around here, a lot of the water around here ends up in the Porter's Lakes. Okay? And there's also the potential contamination of groundwater. As you know, we have very, very limited water. Probably 95% of this city is on wells. So it's important what's going on relative to stormwater. And when we, when they give us some information, we're going to share it with you. And that's one of our requirements. And so we just got this newsletter. And two things I'll share. A lot of this comes through Summit Soil and Water Conservation Districts. So they're an arm, not really an arm, they're an independent agency. They're recognized by the Ohio EPA and for education and programming, et cetera. They were involved in our, in the pond out here. We had grant money for them to refurbish that pond. The theme for 2024 is backyard conservation. And, and we'll, we'll talk about that as we, as we go through the year. Second thing they asked us to mention is you can recycle your Christmas trees. We wrote about that the day before yesterday. And you can take those down to Metro Parks, all the Metro Parks are accepting them. Here, probably closest one for us is Firestone Metropolitan. On Harrington Road, there's Turtle Pond, and so you can take them there. The Porter's Lake State Park has traditionally taken those as well down on the beach. So the recommendation is to recycle those trees as opposed to end in having, leaving them out there for Republic Holloway. And finally, it's that time of year when we typically use a lot of salt to melt the ice. Not so far. All that salt is very damaging to our water, soil, wildlife, and domestic animals. And so here's some tips for environmentally friendly salt use. Check the temperature, because most road salt won't work if it's below 15 degrees. Apply the salt to paved surfaces only, never near a storm drain. Shovel and sweep first, because salt works better on bare surfaces. Shovel often if you can, and put snow piles away from storm drains. Finally, know that one eight-ounce cup of salt will de-ice 250 square feet. And one teaspoon of salt will pollute five gallons of water. Okay? So be careful with what you're doing with the salt. That's all I have. Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Brian, you do all that, right?
Yeah, I got that.
No, I was talking about Brian. He's got his presence.
You know, we were, we were having a game on the brine, too.
Yes.
They're really recommending that as well. And that's something we put together a couple of years ago, Brian's suggestion. We made our own, we got our own brine tank. So that's been a good plus as well.
Not only saved us money, but it puts less sodium in the water. Finance, Brian, too.
Well, to start with, I have our kind of yearly, kind of notice to everyone, especially since we have new members of council, of the public records training, sunshine laws, training that you have to have by law once every term. So those of you, especially who just started your term, I always say, go to get all this out of the way at the beginning, and then you don't have to worry about it until you go through reelection. But anyone that hasn't gotten that, we will also need your certificate that you get for getting that done, because the auditors do X for that, unfortunately.
Yes, during the term, all right?
That is, once a term.
So you have to be there one time during your four years.
Yes. One time during the four terms, four-year term, so. And then, of course, if you are re-elected, you have to do it again and refresher. The, at the state auditor's website, you can look online and do, there's a webinar to do that in your own time, at your own pace, and still get the certificate. You can do it that way. The other training that I suggest, and it's just, and normally you get that as a handout, which all of you that are new have, but this training is, is very important. It's Ohio Ethics Training. You can go to the Ohio Ethics Commission, and they have online webinar training as well. I'm going to get that as well. It tells you what you, what you are, what you can and can't do as an elected official. And also, as, we, we, that, that training to our employees as well, because if you're an employee, for example, if you're an employee or an elected official, just to give you one example of the city of New Franklin, you can never do business with the city of New Franklin, because that's, that's an ethics violation. So it's always good to know those things so that you don't have any trouble. The other thing for the newly elected members is that normally, if you highly missfully does a new councilman's training, it has not, we haven't put it up on their website yet, but as soon as I have that information, I'll pass that along so that you have the opportunity to go. I think Jack and Kevin could tell you, they, they thought it was worth their buy-on going.
Definitely worth it.
So those are the things I'd like you to remember and take care of. Right now, for us, for those who don't know, I haven't been around this too much, we are working on closing the year and opening the new year, which is our busiest time of the year, and we're usually pulling our hair out, but we're, we're doing it as always. So we'll be busy till at least January 31st. We'll wrap that to get all the reports in, because we not only have federal and state reports, we have county reports, and all kinds of even serve as deadlines that we have to get information to them. So we have a lot of things to do. Last but not least, we did it again. For 2022, our, our group here in the administration won an award from the Auditor of State for our 22 audit. The Auditor's Office presents the Auditor of State Award to local governments and school districts upon completion of financial audit. They receive awards if they meet the following criteria of a clean audit. We have to file, the entity must file financial reports with the Auditor of State's office by the statutory due date without extension via the Hinkle system and in accordance with GAAP, which is the generally accepted accounting principles. The audit report does not, cannot contain any findings for recovery, material citations, material weakness, deficiencies, excuse me, uniform guidance, single audit findings, or questioned costs. The, our management letter cannot, contains no comment related to ethics referrals, question costs less than the threshold for the uniform guidance, lack of timely annual financial report submission, bank or conciliation issues, failure to obtain a timely single audit in accordance with uniform guidance, findings for recovery less than $500, and public meetings or public issues, and the entity has no other financial or other concern. So there's a lot that they take into consideration when they give you the award for the clean audit. The Auditor of State actually does over 6,000 audits with state and local government agencies. And under the direction of Auditorium Keith Faber, the office also provides financial services to local governments, investigates and prevents fraud in public agencies, and promotes transparency, which we promote as well here. So we're really happy. And I want to thank all the people in the administration and administrative offices, because they're the ones that do the hard work and, and make all this happen, and we are just really proud. Congratulations.
Name them. Why don't you do this name in publicly? If you have a good help.
Yes. Diana Snyder, who's our Human Resources Coordinator. Chris Lippincott, who's our, one of our Assistant Administrative Assistants, and Karen Morello, who's in the counties. And we are a very small staff, and we, we have a lot to do every year. It gets more and more. So I give them a lot of credit. We work hard.
Thanks. Thank you very much, Sue. Anything for old business?
One of the things I'd grab, last year, I mentioned about having kind of a retreat. It's not that we go somewhere, just that we meet for a workshop to talk about where our visions as a council are for the upcoming year. I didn't know if you guys had some ideas, things that you'd like to talk about. And that workshop, you guys, I'll send out an email to everybody, just kind of reminded it. We can also pick some dates around, and we'll get that out. It'll be a public meeting, we can do it here. It'll just be us talking, but the public wants to attend and watch it, but it'll just be kind of a good planning for, for this upcoming year, so the direction we want to go, and thank you very much.
Anything else for old business? New business?
I'd like to take a moment to, I know it hasn't been done yet tonight, but to welcome the new members, the council, the three of you. Every time we have new members, the first meeting sometimes can be a little bit of, and figuring out this stuff. But because you all attended many meetings before sitting up here, I thought tonight's meeting went very smoothly. It's probably the smoothest first meeting as such that I've seen in a long, long time. So thank you for, for being a part of it, before you became a part of it, and in a show. And I appreciate it. So just want to say thank you.
Thank you. I agree. Something I'd like to say in new business as president, something that I really want to do is, is kind of have a little bit of a definition of the role president. And one of those main things is to ask for an audience with the mayor on a monthly basis. Absolutely. In my experience, the school board, the president, was the, was the direct liaison with the superintendent. So I think, I think something like that for you and I to sit down once a month and just kind of review, you know, you gave, you gave a real nice list of current projects, where we're at. You know, that's a, that's a nice thing for the two of us to sit down and just kind of see where, where we're at. And hopefully that gets, fully on board with that. I figured. And Mr. Powell has something for it, too.
Yeah, kind of playing on that same concept. You know, we've got our committees that we're a part of, you know, whether it's Streets and Drains Utilities, you know, the kind of development, any of those committees. But we also, there's, there's city boards, there's the BZA, there's Planning Commission, there's parks, there's, there's these other, you know, we've got the comprehensive planning. And one of the things I'm familiar with is council members may be a liaison to those, to those boards. And what that does, that gives a direct conduit back to council. And also, at their meetings, if they have something they want to bounce around, you know, there's a council member there that can kind of give them an insight as to what they think council may or may not support, direction, and so on. So I just wanted to kind of ask the whole council here, so what are your thoughts on that kind of a concept, and if you guys would be interested in pursuing a template like that?
I think it'd be terrific.
Yeah, something else we can work on? I think it'd be a good topic for a workshop to...
I think it would, too. One of the things to think about is which committees would go with which one, like, you know, Board of Zoning Appeals, well, that, that, you know, does that go under Laws and Ordinances, or does that, you know, what committees? So we have BZA, Planning and Zoning, Parks, what's the Appeal Board? Board of Zoning Appeals?
We've got the PA Board.
PA goes to law. The Ampli Advisory, no, I'm sorry, I said Appeal Advisory. You know, and then the same concept with, with the Charter Review. So there's someone there to have that kind of liaison. So think about which committee might go, and I don't think it has to be the chair, I think it could just be any member of those committees.
It may not even have to be an exact committee, because you might have some committees that take basically the bulk of the work, or it might be an easy way to spread it around if you just, that's something we can kind of work through and...
Right.
Yeah, keep in mind the password when we meet, if something comes up, so.
Anything else for new business, anybody? I mean, there's so many new people here. Yeah, I would agree with Jim. It's nice to have you here. It is really nice that the three who won the election have been to a lot of meetings and involved in a lot of things, so you're not, you're not on the forefront. Having more new business, this is where we give a second opportunity to the public,